The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular City Council meeting of September 10, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coleman.
Here.
Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Bashirtash. Councilmember Bashirtash has notified us that he is absent due to illness.
Thank you. In keeping with Council's resolution, public statements are received at different times depending on the item. I'll call on the city clerk to call for the public statements at the appropriate time. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you'll be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I'll call for you at the appropriate time. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have received one speaker card for items not on the agenda. The first speaker is Eddie Lane.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Eddie Lane. Transparency, accountability, and staff follow-up from previous commitments are needed with regard to tree work done by the city of Bakersfield. This policymaking council needs to be directly receiving regular reports about tree work that costing hundreds of thousands of dollars paid by taxpayers, being circulated for your review of the November 2024 additions to the city tree plan, and also final recommendations from our tree trimming committee that was met yesterday. Yesterday's recommendations began with a review of the November 20 additions, important commonsense priorities, highlighted our priorities adopted by the council but not implemented by the staff nine months later. For example, for each tree removed, at least one new tree needs to be planted. This would certainly apply to Pin Oak Park, where 14 trees were recently removed, most of which died for lack of water. Another example, the city developed a policy to protect mature trees. Councilmember Coleman, had the city developed such a policy and transmitted it to policy owners, those trees on Gosford would not have been trimmed until October, and inappropriate trimming would not have resulted in, and would have resulted in fines. Another example, a certified arborist is supposed to be there to determine which trees are to be trimmed or removed. I'm passing out a picture taken September 4, 7:48 a.m., corner of H. and Finca Street. I don't know whose ward that is. At least a portion of that tree was alive. Conceivably, that tree could have been trimmed instead of removed. Yesterday, we were told by a staff person that the new contractor is making the decisions about what trees are trimmed or removed. This is not the practice this city needs to employ. The city needs to be making those decisions. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Next speaker, please.
Michael Turnipseed.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. I'll just generally talk about what the last three or four months of county, city activities have been, and all the questionable decisions that have been going on. First of all, your proposal on your sewer system created quite a turmoil, as you well know. The city should have been much more thoughtful in developing a prudent plan to address all of its deferred maintenance instead of just dropping the improving fees, increasing fees by six times. Your city grants made on defined outcomes, and actually they're quantifiable. I don't hear any reports where you're actually comparing grant applicants against each other. Are grant applicants something that happens in the back room somewhere, or are they actually publicized where people can see them? I mean, I look at your Bakersfield notes on Thursday. I have never seen a list of available grants for people to look at and to apply for. That's supposedly one of your primary ways to communicate with the community. When facing different financial challenges, which I define as when you have to have a hiring freeze, making questionable decisions and expenditures. Bakersfield has a major problem getting the work that it has with the staff it needs, and putting a freeze on and restricting the size of the work staff while other expenditures are being made, that light has very negative interpretations in the community. The spending priorities I measure in have been very questionable. As we said from the very beginning in 2018, ongoing expenses should have been no more than 50%. So you had 50% to meet one-time needs when they were needed, and it fell upon debt theirs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
We have not received any speaker cards, any, excuse me, any more speaker cards for non-agenda items, and we have not received any speaker cards for agenda items.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Reports, item 3A, Economic Development Strategic Plan Update.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We have a presentation this afternoon, and the highlight will actually be in response to recent referrals. We had a referral earlier this year from Councilmember Arias and recent discussions about our economic incentive criteria framework. But we wanted to put that in context of the bigger picture, our Economic Development Strategic Plan, and so Ms. Byers has a brief update on where we're at overall with our Economic Development Strategic Plan, as well as some specifics about our framework for economic incentives.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk and Byers.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Yes, today we're going to be speaking about our Economic Development Strategic Plan. The Economic and Community Development Department, we have several units, and most of our units all have a strategic plan. So we have an affordable housing strategic plan. There is a homeless strategy, as well as this economic development one. It was noted that we would be bringing an update over the next 60 to 90 days, and staff was ready to bring it down. So I don't remember.
Madam Clerk, for the record, Councilmember Arias has joined us at 3:39.
Is it dead? Do I have to turn it on? Just need some skills. Thank you. So in 2021, the City Council did adopt the EDSP. It was based on a lot of research. We had also worked after B-3K had done their plan as well. There are three major categories, and within that, there are 17 strategies. So the categories are industry targeting, and that has to do with business development and job creation. There are umbrella programs, and that's creating an environment for economic progress. And then there's the land use, placemaking programs, and that's the physical changes that would accommodate quality growth. So under category one, we have our business development, job creation. I'm not going to read every one of the 17 strategies to you. We are going to go over some of the activities that we are doing in each of these. The one that is dark blue is kind of our next layer of program that we need to go in further, and we need some conversations with council about our economic development incentives. And so I'm going to jump right into some of the work that we've been doing. We have had business retention, expansion, and attraction. If you're ever talking about economic development, this is always what's highlighted as the number one work the economic developers do, and that is retention, expansion, and attraction. We did execute with BIOS Health. Since then, they have partnered with CSUB and Dignity Health for the Precision Medicine Initiative. We worked with Cal Dairies in their site location, making sure they were zoned. They opened a state-of-the-art bottling facility. They're hoping to be the largest in the world with their advanced manufacturing bottling facility. They are currently working on, with three large industrial users, on-site selections as well. We have an RFP out for a business and industrial recruiter to kind of assist the city in this work that we've done. We, for Rosedale Ranch, we had worked with Newmark, and they really highlighted some areas that staff was lacking, and so this RFP would assist in that recruitment. Tech Park RFP, this has been on the docket for a long time, having an RFP to try and market to Tech Park Development. We have entrepreneurial development. We did, through ARPA funds, we did do Entrepreneurship 1.0 and 2.0. 1.0, we worked with KCCD, the Small Business Association, and CSUB for a program. It went so well that we ended up providing additional funding for Entrepreneurship 2.0. Since the inception of the one that we do with Launchpad, there have been 500 jobs created just from an entrepreneurship program. So when we talk about things like Cal Dairies, which is a huge development, provided employment opportunities for 170 people, and then you have an entrepreneurship program that created 506 jobs. And so it really shows what's possible when we invest in small business. I have a quote from T. Johnson that she had given us for State of the City that was there as entrepreneurs, "Our proof of what's possible when capital is combined with capacity building." So that program is about building out entrepreneurs' level of understanding of business, doing a business plan, working with them, and it's created this ecosystem of other things. And so now access to capital has become one of the big conversations for entrepreneurs, that they know who to go to, who to talk to, quit using their own, their personal checking account as the way to fund their business. Those type of things are conversations that often need had with entrepreneurs, but also how to market their business. So that's one of the programs that we're really proud of. We also participated in Valley Strong Credit Union. They did a financial summit. Cecilia Griego with our staff was one of the presenters, and it was building bridges for financial resources, so again, providing opportunities to our entrepreneurs outside of just city funding. We have done small business support, the Economic Opportunity Area Incentive Program. There are seven areas. We have done over 100 grants. I think we're at 111 grant agreements. You can really start to see some of that work that has been done in our community, the growth of downtown and kind of the revitalization of that. That was also highlighted at the State of the City, 18th and 19th Street, just how much work has been done for small businesses. There is a Business Incentive and Resource Guidebook that's under development, and that again is for small businesses and entrepreneurs to understand how to go through the process, how to get a business license. If you need a building permit, check your zoning first. Are you allowed to be a business in that? So that is under development right now. We worked on three ARPA large facade grants to redevelop properties in downtown right now. One that's being highlighted is at 19th and L, where JP Lake is making improvements to pretty much the city block there, where they found the ghost sign. And so if you've been following the newspaper, that is one of the large facade grant programs. Vest Drugs is another one, where they made some improvements to Vest Drugs, and also the vacant spaces up the street. And then Tomas del Toro is going to be making improvements to the former Toucan Building, where they're going to be doing small business development as well. So those are some of the small support programs we have. We are evaluating and refining economic development incentives. One of the big topics right now is Opportunity Zones 2.0. The original program was set to expire in 2026. It has been included in the Big Beautiful Bill to be put in perpetuity, so it's going to be a forever program. But we do have to evaluate and recertify our existing 15 zones. There's been some changes to the program, and so making sure that we're able to capitalize on that for our business owners to have a capital gain deferral incentive. A lot of the housing that has been developed in downtown utilized Opportunity Zones, and so we want to make sure that we are advocating, because in the new Opportunity Zones 2.0, only 25% of the state's qualified census tracts are eligible, and so we're going to have to make sure that we include our community in that recertification. And then I talked about the Tech Park design. Since the adoption of the EDSP, I was talking a lot about the ecosystem for access to capital for our small businesses, and CDFI is our Community Development Financial Institutions. Two have been formed since the EDSP was adopted, and so Valley Strong got their certification. We also have Alta is one of the banks that has it, then SelfHelp, and who is the other? Oh, I know, Strata. Strata is now pursuing their certification as an EDSP. We are evaluating Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. That's kind of touted as redevelopment 2.0, where you take future property tax increment, and you can do projects with that. You can have infrastructure. You can do parks. You can do other developments. It's a really interesting program, and so we are going to be evaluating what our property tax has the power to receive bond financing from. And then what we're going to be talking about later is the Economic Development Scorecard. City staff has worked really hard to make sure that we're working on City Council priorities. But with that, when we talk about these incentives, how do we make sure that we are in that attraction field, trying to attract the right development or incentives? And so we're going to talk about that in just a minute. The economic, the EDSP included marketing program, making sure that we had a marketing program in it. It covers several things, and it was actually one of the items that Newmark, when we did Rosedale Ranch, highlighted, was we didn't have a slide deck. We didn't have a one-page document to be able to give out that has all of our stats. And so we're going to be working on our marketing RFP. It will cover the benefits of doing business in Bakersfield, what incentives are there. Again, that Opportunity Zone 2.0 that we're going to be recertifying, and then awareness building for Bakersfield Quality of Life. So what is arts and culture in the community? What are our outdoor activities, those kind of things? Category two is build implementation capacity through partnerships, advocacy, and program monitoring. Again, I'm not going to read all of the items on this. The dark blue one, again, is kind of the next area that staff is going to be focusing on. We've been working on these other ones pretty hard, but that dark blue one is the next one we're going to be focusing on. Investigate and implement financing mechanisms to support real estate investments. When we talk about real estate investments and development, that's really the economic driver for the community. If we can increase property tax through development, that is really what funds the general plan. We were talking about PSVS earlier, and that measure is a sales tax measure, and so making sure that we are supporting and getting the retail sales where we can. So that's one of the items that we're working on. So education and workforce development, we did several programs. They were mostly ARPA-funded, that Entrepreneurship 1 and 2. We have an ARPA workforce development under contract. We have that under contract with three different entities. Creating opportunities sometimes include making sure that you have trained individuals to be able to go into those jobs, and so we are working on workforce development and making sure that there's opportunities for trained staff. There's a youth jobs program. 122 students have participated. We talk about our youth jobs program a lot in the department, that it was a grant that we had received, and through that, we have fellowships and mentorships. We had programs this summer for high school students as well as young adults. And in fact, they did some interviews today for more fellows to be working with City Hall. And then we partner, we're partnering with Kern Builders Exchange. One of the things that we've noticed with our contractors is a lot of the small contractors don't know how to bid for the procurement requirements that city jobs have or prevailing wage jobs have. And so making sure that our contractors have the ability that when there is work where prevailing wage is an option, that they're eligible for it. We have found with some of our home repair programs and our ADA access, they're very small projects, and so they require actually a lot of paperwork to be able to do ADA improvements to a residence where it's only a $5,000 grant. But through this, we're hoping that we have more contractors who are eligible, able to do the procurement. Yes, it's only 5,000 per, but we do have funding to do about 20 ADA improvements on residences, and we have struggled to find a single contractor willing to take on that job. Another one is to elevate city's reputation for business development. I'm going to take a nod over to Phil Burns, Development Services Director. The physical one-stop shop is under construction in Development Services. If you have more questions about that, I'm sure he'll be happy to speak of it. We are working on a business and industrial recruiter, like I spoke about, but then also that Economic Resource Guidebook is under development. We do have to address some of the internal and external threats that we have as a community. Part of the EDSP outlined that, and so we recognize that we have threats for us. We are working for California Jobs First Program. We submitted an eight-partner application for catalyst funding, and we convene with those partners to submit for implementation funds in our target industries that are identified in the EDSP. External funding sources. So we can't, we recognize in the Economic Development Department that the ARPA funding, while it was amazing to have that opportunity to do programs like Entrepreneurship and to get the numbers that we did, there just isn't the space to only be budgeted from the city. And so we have gone out for a lot of grants. We spend a lot of our time evaluating and looking at grants. We did receive the Transformative Climate Community Grant, 22.1 million. It has 17 partners, six projects, four community plans. It is extensive work in our southeast strong neighborhood. We also have an EPA Brownfield Grant, and a Brownfield Grant is funding that will clean sites that have, are undevelopable based off of the use that was previously on them. So those are some of the things that we're evaluating or currently under the work of for external funding sources, and then investigate and implement financing mechanisms. Again, we are looking into that EIFD, Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. There's also CRIA's. There's a couple of funding mechanisms that take less of a hit on the city budget. We are looking at a P-Bid, which is a business improvement district effort in downtown. They have attempted a couple times to do them, but I think with the grassroots effort that we've seen in downtown Bakersfield to redevelop, this is a way to maybe have that conversation again. Opportunity Zone, we are partnering with Chamber of Commerce and other partners who have taken advantage of the Opportunity Zone to make sure that we can recertify. Category three, land use and placemaking. We have worked on several initiatives. Prosperity Neighborhood, we have two neighborhoods that we, what I love about the program is we went into the community, had community members attend, and had them tell us what they need. It wasn't the city government going in and telling them, you know what would be great for you? This is going to improve your life. They told us the things that they needed. And not all of those items are things that the city needs to take care of. Some of them are, they wanted early childhood access. So we're partnering with First Five. We're partnering with Bakersfield City School Districts to make sure that there's access for people to have for this early childhood education, but then also requesting things like clean streets and making sure that we have curb gutter sidewalks. And there's some of the work that is city, but then a lot of these programs that we're working in our Prosperity Neighborhood are about connecting the right people to work towards this. Another example that we have in our Prosperity Neighborhood, they voted and stated they just didn't know how to access funding the same way other people did. And so Strata has a program to teach people checkbook balancing, things that you think are really simple, but it is a way to make an investment in the community, and so we're in coordination for that. The Downtown Vision Plan, we are working in coordination with the General Plan Update. We want to make sure that we're not doing duplicative activities, even though it is a priority, it's a council goal, but it is also a timing. And so we're working on that vision plan in coordination with that General Plan Update. Southeast Bakersfield, that is one of our prosperity neighborhoods. It's also where the Southeast Strong Initiative is occurring, and so a lot of southeast Bakersfield attention. We are set to start the Southeast Vision Plan this fall. Old Town Kern, again, a prosperity neighborhood. We did complete a vision plan. We worked with the community for what would they like to see, and that has recently been completed, and we're looking to implement the items in there. Repurposing of high vacancy retail commercial centers. Councilmember Coleman and I, we're speaking of a retail commercial center currently that appears to have some high vacancy. What is it that the city can do to assist in attraction in those high vacancy? We have a contract with Placer AI, which is really, I would be afraid of it if I didn't know the back of it. Like, it's very Big Brother, like it tracks your cell phone, and it knows your credit card spending and those kind of things, and we're able to get information about who is traveling in and out of these areas. It also does void analysis, things like that. So if you have a specific commercial center, you're able to look at it and say, okay, we have this vacancy. It will run models for us to say what would be a good match. And from there, we're able to work with the developer, we're able to work with the property owner, but then also work with perhaps some retailers that would be a good fit. And then we are evaluating our EOA areas. Is there other areas that could use some funding where there's high vacancy? And then lastly, there's the comprehensive evaluation of the city zoning, and I think you guys are all up to date on where that stands right now. We are aligning the EDSP and the Capital Improvement Plan. There's a lot of improvements on 18th and 19th Street. Rosedale Ranch, I've spoken of that a couple of times, but one of the things they're doing currently is the alignment of the future West Beltway and the circulation element. I will allow Phil to speak about that if you have questions, but we also have other corridor revitalizations. So with that, I'm going to skip subject matters with you, and we have attached to your PowerPoint some of the things that we're looking at for a scorecard. When we talk about wanting to be in line with City Council's priorities, with City Council's funding, we need to know where you would place some of that emphasis. And so we've come up with, it was a referral from Councilmember Arias, so thank you for that. I think it was a great idea. We've worked with City Manager's Office. Jason Kater was instrumental in putting this together. But what we've been looking about as possible criteria for the council to determine, sorry, I forgot. It is a strategy included in the EDSP. We want to standardize approach. How do we track engagement against the targets for city priorities? And then we want to provide transparency in the early stages of staff's focus. So if somebody calls and wants the economic development team to work with them on something, we will be going through the scorecard to see if it is a priority for that staff member. So the recommended criteria, we evaluated based on various key metrics. We're utilizing a weighted metric system, and then based on the score, we recommend one or more of the following supports. We either advocate, we support them with the business success team, and then we consider financial incentives to support project development, and that would be subject to council approval. It is, so one of the recommended, the top recommended criteria is what is the consistency with the Economic Development Strategic Plan? Does it target industry? The EDSP identifies for target industry. B-3K Market Assessment also has some target industries, and then the California Jobs First Regional Plan does as well. And so are we having conversations with target industry clusters that are in alignment with this? We would also want to look at number of jobs. Are they providing a number of jobs, both construction- Are they providing a number of jobs, both construction and permanent? And are they quality jobs? So B3K, in their study, really talked about what a quality job is, and are, is this unknown development looking to create quality jobs from that? And then what would be their capital invested? It's not just the city's investments. What would the developers' capital investment be? Placemaking. We have a lot of vacant and blighted properties, so we would, we have a line in there to score based off of that. Is it in alignment with the general plan and other redevelopment efforts like TCC, like our Prosperity Neighborhoods? Are the investments above minimum development standards? And so do they plan to put into their development other things that aren't necessarily required? What does screening of that facility look like? You know, currently, a lot of our items, you can just put a chain link fence, you know? Is somebody willing to put more trees than what are currently required? Something like that is an investment that would be above the minimum development standards. Are they investing in under-invested areas? We have the Opportunity Zones. It is based off of Quality Census Tracks. There's also CalEnviron Screen, which identifies 21 criterias that would classify as under-invested. And then what are our regional and local economic alignment? Is it a company relocating from outside the area? Are they going to have a local hiring preference? One of the arguments that we talk a lot about is if not but for. So somebody needs to be able to tell us that if not for our assistance, what would, what would occur? And so that's what the if not but for argument is. And then is it a contribution to Bakersfield for a destination of, for innovation? And then assessment of growth and scalability? So we recognize that there's some firms that it's not necessarily going to be a huge job provider. I think BIOS is a good example of this. Could we assess somebody in the future for their scalability for being a startup or an emerging company? We have a lot of things that we want advanced manufacturing. What does that look like if they don't have certain track records? And so we would like to be able to have conversations with companies that could be scaled based on startup. So next steps as to receive and file, but staff is available for questions or comments on the incentives criteria.
Thank you, Ms. Byers. Mr. Clegg, before we go to the public, do you wish to make any other comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to summarize from my perspective at a very high level, there's often the question of, you know, when and why do we make public investments? You know, if you have a business that could be a viable business, viable business plan, why would the city make investments? And there are some projects that are very competitive, and there are some projects that also just wouldn't really happen because the market is not driving them to occur. And so we do have many successful businesses throughout Bakersfield that were very happy come and are successful without any help from the city. But there are some opportunities where there's savvy developers who know that they could, they're desirable because they're going to create a strong tax base, they're going to create good sales tax, good property tax, they're going to create jobs. And so they look for cities who are going to incentivize to bring them there, and for better or worse, we sometimes find ourselves competing against other cities for these same projects. And so in those instances, we believe that if it's going to create that long-term benefit, there could be value in those public dollars, making sure those projects happen here. That's one category. The second category is that there are some projects that market conditions just don't quite pencil for those projects to occur, but they're things that would be very well-aligned with some of our strategies. In particular, this occurs often in some of our disadvantaged or under-invested neighborhoods, that market conditions don't warrant the same investment level. But if they're really close, that gap that's between profitable and not profitable, if the city can kind of help fill that gap, then those projects become a reality, and they go forward, and they provide those benefits to that area, to that neighborhood. And it could be also, it's not just maybe a under-invested neighborhood, it could be, again, a specific industry type that we really want to see happen, but the market conditions don't quite make it profitable. But if the city offers just that little bit of gap, then it makes the project now happen where otherwise it wouldn't happen. And so in those two instances, I would argue that yes, it's beneficial for the city to offer some kind of assistance, and it could be a variety of different assistance. And today, we're focused more so on the criteria for when it warrants, but we have a tool, a kit, that can include just white glove treatment. It can include, you know, helping them through the permit streamlining process, and then it can also include, you know, specific financial incentives. But there's also more than one tool for financial incentives based on what makes the most sense for that particular project. We're not trying to get into every detail of that today, but really talk through what are the right criteria. And then my last thought is ultimately, you know, why do we do economic development? Why do we offer these incentives? Our revenue base, as a city, to provide the resources that this community needs is based on property tax, it's based on sales tax. We have some other utility taxes, you know, fees for service. But ultimately, we need to create a stronger economy that creates the right types of jobs that then help us to both diversify and strengthen our revenue base so we can continue to provide the services to a growing community that's growing and demanding more and more services. And some of that, the private markets, you know, it will happen. If you leave the private markets to themselves, some of that will happen. But we can create more by being intentional and strategic and making, you know, thoughtful investments to grow our economy in the right direction, as well as make sure that it's growing even faster than without our interventions.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers who'd like to comment on this report?
Marico, I have not received any speaker cards.
Just want to give you the opportunity since you are here. Thank you, and then we'll go to council. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. My first question was more global, and I think Mr. Clegg answered it just now, and that was, why really is it important for cities, not just the city of Bakersfield, but cities in general, to have an economic development strategy? Why is that so important for us? And the second question is, how do we know as a council, and how can the public and the taxpayers be sure that this isn't just the tail wagging the dog, that in fact, we are making an impact as a result of our efforts? That our, our strategies, our investment in ECD is actually making a impact, making a difference, and not just sort of, you know, sort of responding to natural activities within the market?
Thanks, Councilmember Gonzalez. I'll take a first cut and then ask Ms. Byers to add to that. I would just add one additional thought that I didn't mention earlier to your first question of why do this. Also, you know, folks who are very competitive and get a lot of these good jobs, it's because they've been strategic, and if we don't have a strategy, as you said, many cities create strategies, we don't have a strategy, then we don't do as well as some of those other locations. To your second question, we do have a series of what I would consider higher community-level metrics that we track, that while we aren't in total control of, we feel like we should be accountable to those. So unemployment rate, is the unemployment rate going up or down? Number of new business licenses that have been pulled? Number of jobs, you know, in our overall workforce and economy? But then specific to our efforts, we also are tracking, depends on which projects, of course, but projects that we directly get engaged on, we track, are we seeing an increase in sales tax? Like, how much sales tax is that specific project generating? We look at the number of jobs that are generated, the number of capital investment in that project, and you'll note that all three of those are things that we put on our economic incentive criteria list. And so we should be tracking both, just overall, how is economic output and unemployment as a community, but then look specific to each of the projects that we've, you know, made an impact in. For example, and Ms. Byers can correct me if I'm wrong, but our entrepreneurship grants, you know, we've given away a little more than $1 million in entrepreneurship grants, but it's created more than 290 jobs locally. And so we can point to the number of jobs created for those grants that have been awarded, and we are and should be tracking what are the outcomes from the investments that we make. What would you add, Jenny?
I think just adding the competitive nature that we're in. We know who our competitors are when we talk about industrial development. We have Wonderful just to the north of us, and we have Tawone south of us, and both of them really rely on the population in Bakersfield. But you're seeing that they're getting a lot more of the wins than land within the city of Bakersfield. So when we talk about property tax and we talk about investments that are $100 million, that property tax becomes a very real number that could be accessible to the city of Bakersfield that is locating just outside of our boundaries. And, and so in order to be more competitive, they have all of their plans in order. They know who they're targeting, and we need to have kind of the same targeted approach.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the responses as well. I mean, my, my take is that, you know, we still have this structural problem with our, with our budget, and, you know, Measure N has helped us for a few years, but it didn't fix the structural issue in terms of how we grow and the number of expenses as it relates to the growth of our city. And everything gets expensive the further and further we sprawl outward, and that's just a reality. And so we, we have to be able to have a strategy that really focuses in on development, on economic activity, on infill development, the cost per capita of delivering city services, whether it be police, fire, roads, sewer, water, whatever it is, is far cheaper when you, when you densify the urban core than it is when you expand outward. I think we need actually both, but it, from an economic perspective, as a plan, I think that needs to be, that infill development needs to be a priority. I'm going to switch gears. Mr. Clegg, you made a comment regarding market, market conditions sometimes don't make it profitable for businesses to invest in certain areas. I wanted to make it clear that when we talk about the market conditions, we're really talking about the initial upfront capital investment or startup costs. We're not suggesting that somehow the, the ongoing operations is not profitable, and therefore we're subsidizing ongoing business expenses. I just want to make sure the public is clear how we determine if and when the city might participate in some sort of economic incentive.
Yeah, great point, Councilmember. Thank you for that. And yes, Mayor and Council, we typically, a, you know, developer will look at what is the number of years before they're going to see a return on their investment based on that upfront capital that they've got to put into a project. And you're right, we're not, we're not subsidizing ongoing. We are talking about that upfront capital to help create an incentive. It still has to be a project that's going to pencil in the long run for them. We just help them get over that hump initially. And then I would also just add that, you know, there are some, there are some policy choices that the council can make and has made around land use, around, you know, development standards and development impact fees, that also help create conditions in which, you know, projects can, can pencil. But we also look at our economic incentives to help us, you know, close that gap for the right projects.
Thank you. And my next question is regarding grants and incentives, and it's dovetailing off of comments that Mr. Michael Turnipsey made just a moment ago, because I think it's an important one. It's a question that I've, I've raised in the past as well in terms of how do we determine when we actually award a grant and, and determine that it's actually worthy of city investment vis a vis other projects that are happening in the community? I'm thinking in particular, you know, downtown, where there's lots of investment, lots of folks who want these dollars that are finite. How do we make sure that our investment is the right one and we're getting the best Versus, on the other hand, there are opportunities out there that we may miss, and we may not have, you know, a grant cycle that is aligned with the opportunity that comes about. For example, there may be a new industry that comes in, and the timing is such that there may be a deal to be made with this new, you know, industry, and they're bringing in, you know, X number of new jobs. How do we seize that opportunity? And how do I, how do we allow ourselves enough flexibility to pursue those opportunities and provide those incentives outside of a grant-making process? So there's sort of two sides of the coin that I've experienced on the council, and I just want to kind of get your sense, Ms. Byers, how staff is thinking through some of these things.
We really have two levels of incentives that we're talking about, and so we do have the economic opportunity areas. There has been 110, 111, and the average grant on that is less than 25,000. And so it's typically a small investment, so somebody can get some tenant improvements, they can get a sign, they can get something, marketing materials, those kind of things. And then we have our economic development subsidies, and so that would be a very large-scale development, and that's where this criteria comes into play for the large, larger projects, especially those really greater than 100,000. With the economic opportunity area, we are now looking at similar criteria that we're going to be bringing to finance economic development and jobs at the September meeting for the same reason that we need to be able to show why a project is more beneficial than others. When we had the ARPA funding, when we had, even EOA funding had received a lot of resources a couple years into the program because it just wasn't seeing anyone go for an application, and now you have so many applications that we're receiving that we are starting to look at it through a different lens. But both of those would be based off of kind of a scorecard.
Okay. I appreciate that. And then my last two comments. Number one is regarding the Opportunity Zones. I want to echo the point that this has been a big benefit for, for downtown in certain projects. I know that this topic actually was raised at the Government Relations Committee with the Greater Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce recently, and I believe that they've, they've established a committee to look at the new boundaries and to make some recommendations. And so I'd like to make a referral this afternoon that staff work with the Chamber of Commerce and that committee so that we can establish that working relationship and identify key areas to, to get these, get these areas right for the future.
No referral needed. I am already on that committee.
Beautiful. Great, great. I figured you might be. And then the last thing is, as it relates to recommended criteria, I didn't see any reference to tradable sectors, and I think that's a really important piece, that they're actually looking at new industries and businesses, you know, local or outside the area, doesn't matter to me, but as long as it's bringing in new dollars into this region, into this regional economy, I think that that's a criteria that we really need to keep on the forefront.
I appreciate that comment. And when we look at this, the B3K Market Assessment really included those tradable sectors. So I'm sorry that we didn't use that exact phrasing, but when we talk about, I think we could change it to target industry cluster tradable sectors that are identified in the economic development. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you to your team.
Thank you. I'm going to invite Mr. Turnipsey to offer his comment. I think it's related to a comment that Councilmember Gonzalez made.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Back in 2017, I went to the economic summit that we had in Bakersfield a few years ago, down in San Diego, and then we, I met an economic developer named James Gold, who worked around the world doing different things. And in 2018, we brought him to the Kern Tax Annual Meeting to be our speaker. And if you want to watch the video, it's on our webpage, and his PowerPoint, and there are things there. And- And his PowerPoint and things are there. The plan is the plan. He said, "Everybody can draw up a good plan. It's just like on a football game on Sunday. It's all about implementation." He says, "You can hire anybody, because they all do the same things. They all look at silos, and they all look at this, and they all look at that. But what it boils down to is totally, who's your patent? Who's the guy that's going to get it done no matter what?" And he said, whether you look at Wichita, you look at some of the cities that have really had, Oklahoma City, they have had a dynamic person who will not fail, and he drives it. When he picks up the phone, everybody answers his phone call. It's a patent who refuses to accept defeat, and that's really the hard thing. And when you look across the community, and not to make people foul good-bad, go back 20 years ago. You had a Jim Burke, when Jim Burke, Harold Meek, Carpe, Dean Gay, we had 10 people in this town that they wanted to get something done, they got it done. And I look all the time for who are those patents that do not accept defeat. They step on a few toes, but at the end of the game, they get the plan done. There's no excuse for failure. And that was Mr. Golub's biggest thing. That is the biggest decision. It's not who draws your plan. Brookings is a great company, and they did their thing. Or whether it's Mr. Golub, it's who you select to move the ball. Who's that quarterback going to be? You need to find a Josh Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. And thank you for bringing Mr. Golub. He was an excellent speaker. Thank you. And now I'll go to Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. I think we do need a Josh Allen in the city of Bakersfield. But I think we've got a couple who are getting there. And I just want to be responsive to Mr. Turnipseed, because I think you hit the nail on the head, which is that these documents don't do any good sitting on a shelf somewhere collecting dust. And I think that we agree with that sentiment. And I believe what this document does is really materialize and create a level playing field in some fairness, depending on what the project is actually going to be bringing to this community. And so I'm really grateful, Jenny, to you and your team for bringing this forward. I think that it really puts into play a lot of those documents, the EDSP, the work that B3K has done, the California Jobs First Regional Plan. There's been dozens of plans that have been put together for this particular work. So I appreciate the work and the thought behind it. A couple of thoughts as it relates to the scorecard. I agree with Councilmember Gonzalez. I think there should be particular emphasis on those properties that are really addressing some of the blighted properties throughout Bakersfield. Yes, for sure downtown, but also in some of our older communities as well. We know that just turning around one property could signal to the rest of that neighborhood and neighbors along that street that the city of Bakersfield cares, and that they should potentially look at what they can do to improve their property. I think also the way in which we define our under-invested neighborhoods is going to be really important as we look across our city. We rank very high on the Calenviron screen based on Census Tract, particularly on the east side of the 99. But I think even on the other side of the 99, there are communities that could benefit from some of these investments, some older neighborhoods. So I'd be curious to know how we define that. When it comes to jobs and the types of jobs that it's bringing, I really appreciate the fact that we're not only taking into consideration whether or not they're construction jobs or permanent operational jobs, but the quality of the job, how much folks would be making, what the benefits look like. I think all of that is important to consider. But I think on the local hiring preference, I think I would prefer something closer to like a sliding scale that really measures exactly how much of a preference they have of bringing in hiring local folks as opposed to folks from outside of the community. We have dozens and dozens of local vocational workforce development programs where we have students who are waiting for an opportunity. And so I think where we can leverage these jobs and create an opportunity for some of those individuals, that would be incredibly important. I also would like to call out that we add some consideration of whether or not they're engaged with our local apprenticeship programs and specifically working with those particular trades. Those students are trained, they're certified, they're ready to go to be on the job. And what better place to do their work than right here back at home? So I think, I would love to add that. The other is, as I think back to the investment that was just made through our EOA program for the Delores Worth the Peace and Justice Cultural Center, is how are we measuring the impact of arts, culture, and tourism? I think that there should be some consideration of those factors. Our TOT fund is another source of revenue. And if there's an opportunity for us to create space for more tourism in the city, I think that that should be for consideration. All in all, I think this is a great step in the right direction. Again, I think it creates fairness. And I would actually like to make a referral that we do nearly the same thing but for housing and start to measure which types of housing it is that we want to see in our city and where we want to see it. I just jotted down a couple of points. Councilmember Gonzalez mentioned high density. I completely agree. I also think that we have been talking about bringing more housing downtown, which should be a factor. The affordability component, the willingness to house homeless individuals. Not all projects have to house, affordable housing projects have to house 100% of homeless. We could have a regular residential tract that houses 5% to 10% or at-risk of homeless families. I think that that should be a consideration, along with placemaking, which I think is captured here. So I would like to make that referral, that we take the next step and take a look at housing, and just want to say good job to you and your team.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, some of my questions were diffused by some of the questions and comments that Councilmember Gonzalez made, so I'll keep my comments short. So I just wanted to say that I like the plan. I don't think you're collecting dust on these plans. What I like about it, the economic development plan, is it's more than just grants. There's an educational component, and there's job assistance programs and all these different elements to it. So I like that aspect of it. And I'm not going to make a referral tonight, so.
Good job.
I do want to say, and then the point that Councilmember Gonzalez brought up was that EOA, what areas are we investing money in? And I'm glad to see us taking a more global look at that, because the perception is we spend all our money downtown. And yeah, we do spend quite a bit, but there's areas east of town, those kind of places that get attention. But there are other areas, and I think of the Ming Corridor, I think of Panama east of 99, I think of South Chester, South Union, that maybe don't get the amount of attention that they could. And so I'm glad to see some meeting of people that are concerned about that to try to identify what those areas are, come up with programs for those specific areas as well. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Coleman. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this. This is incredibly helpful, and I echo a lot of the sentiment of my colleagues as well. So they'll save me some time with some of my questions. I, one, wanted to draw attention and just point out and really celebrate the fact that 122 youth have gone through the Youth Jobs Program. That is incredible. And just having that youth focus and bringing young people into the city and seeing them at City Hall when they're in, and they're like the little experts, and we're able to just go and ask them whatever questions. I just feel that bringing local, when we talk about local, I think about youth first. And we already have such a great practice with bringing young people into our jobs program, but I'd love to see that grow. And Councilmember Arias has pointed out a couple of different ways, but really taking advantage of building like a job pipeline, a more permanent pipeline into the city of Bakersfield from, whether it's our Community College Districts, Cal State Bakersfield, our different apprentice programs locally. And that being how, when we say hiring local, it includes our youth as well, who are kind of, maybe they're midway through their degree programs, and they don't realize that there are a plethora of jobs here at the city and in local government. From, you can be an attorney for the city to, as vastly different to being kind of like in the Rexon Park Department. There's just, I think, an opportunity to expand that information and bring more young people in. And I really appreciate Mr. Turnipseed's points about the patents. And I feel a lot of our patents are local, those that, while, it's kind of two things at the same time. It's equally as important to attract new industry and new innovation while also elevating those who have continued to build out different job opportunity and industry locally. And how are our relationships with those who are doing that, who are creating hundreds of locals' jobs within the city of Bakersfield and its surrounding areas for the residents of Bakersfield? Do we, as a city, have a strong relationship there where we are seen as like a trusted source of information, aid for something as small or large happening within their business, on their various properties? I almost want, like, within the scorecard, if there was like a local category where we could just add, I kind of wrote it in, but there's like a subheading that just says "local," and are we able to check off what local things are being accomplished by the person, the industry, the entity that's applying? Are they able to hire local? Are they able to, are their families from Bakersfield? Are they familiar with the area? And I almost want to suggest that, or I do want to suggest that local gets expedited. A lot of the time, the feedback that I'm hearing is we are responsive and giving like the red carpet treatment or white glove treatment, as has been referenced, to those who are coming into our community and bringing jobs, which is important. But I hope that we're not leaving behind the locals as well and being responsive of something that has been long overdue in an improvement on a property, to be able to expand a property or a business, and there be some sort of level of service that's provided to those who do call Bakersfield home and continue to call, create jobs here. And almost as if there's, that gets incorporated into our level of service towards those who are more local, who are making the extra efforts to hire local, to reach into our apprentice programs, and so forth. So that's my one suggestion, is creating a local category. And I was curious if we have explored creating like a corporate social responsibility program at the city with those who do, who have the capacity, who are coming into the city of Bakersfield and are larger corporations? Have we explored creating a corporate social responsibility program that would then create incentive, where we are providing white gloves or all of the things, all of the nice things that help promote building your business and bringing it here, but while also saying we understand that this is a unique community, and this is a special community to be a part of, and we have, we are business-friendly, we have the land to build up and across. But also, how do we also know that you are coming into the community and becoming a part of the community? And I feel encouraged when I see corporate social responsibility programs, and I would be curious if we are able to replicate that here, or at least kind of think through options. Because I, too, like Mr. Turnipseed, I'm really encouraged by Oklahoma City. There are so many demographic, business, land, climate similarities to the city of Bakersfield. We just don't have the Oklahoma City Thunder, so if we can talk to the NBA, I'm willing to join that conversation as well. The NHL, I know we have the Condors, but I think we could really use an NBA team here. But that was one of my other questions. And then a lot of what we were talking about just reminded me of naming some of these things, like some of these categories and some of these parts of town. While we have, and I know we call them economic opportunity districts, and they're all called something differently, but to me, they sounded a lot like innovation districts of when we bring in new businesses, corporations, folks are joining us, or we're just kind of rebranding. I feel that helps with placemaking when a part of town has a similar identity, and there's a transportation corridor, there's an innovation district, there's the heart of our city in the downtown. Those were some of the thoughts that I had, and I welcome any responses or feedback there. Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Several different thoughts. Let me actually start with where you ended. A couple of different thoughts. First, as we go into the general plan, Ms. Byers has been very thoughtful about how to name and brand some of our sort of districts or subareas, as well as the city council initiative around smart growth. We're talking about identifying those business nodes, and so it's really great feedback for us to think about and how we brand and name those business nodes, that we can do it in a way that can be attractive to bringing people in. Often you want to think about historic nature of certain names, but then we could also call it by a historic name and then call it the transportation sector, the innovation sector, things like that. So it's very good feedback for us to think about as we're looking at some of that, along with the general plan, as well as some of our just business district or business nodes planning. And then the last thought actually related to that topic is, I would suggest that what you're suggesting is that it's consistent with Councilmember Weir. Even in our last conversation about vision and planning, I know he's expressed over several of our workshops, sort of, when he talks about what's our vision for the future, it's identifying some of those key corridors or sectors, saying that that's where we're going to have advanced manufacturing, that's our advanced manufacturing sector, or that's our energy innovation sector. Like, what are we going to put where is kind of how I summarize it down. So that's consistent with something that Councilmember Weir's been kind of looking for in some of our long-range planning as well. Shifting gears back to the corporate social responsibility policy, we have not explored that. It's not been something that we've looked at either as part of one of our planning processes, or we haven't had a referral related to that topic historically. I think some aspects of, some of the corporate responsibility models that I've just been exposed to through professional trainings or articles, some of those same things have some relation to some of the items that are in this list, but we haven't taken that on as a specific initiative. I think I would respectfully categorize it as one of those areas where we're trying to get good at the basics before we kind of go to the next level. But good comment to note that that's something that we can have in our list of things to consider into the future. And I do know that we have some local corporations that practice that, even though it hasn't been something the city has sort of encouraged or incentivized. I do know there are some here who do that, and so we could even have conversations with those folks that do it to understand how and why, and whether or not incentives from the city would make a difference. I think there was a particular nugget in what you shared, though, about as new folks come, being intentional about sharing some of the important values that are expressed in this community, and having that be sort of part of their acculturation to Bakersfield and Kern, that I think probably is more eminently needed to me. and Kern, that I think probably is more eminently needed to me than even some of the other aspects that we'll go back as staff and think about. How do we help encourage new folks as they come in to be contributors to the community the way that many of our folks who have been here a long time have been doing for decades and ask them to do the same?
Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
No comment on the NBA. We used to have a D-League team, so I was just, if everyone wants to open that, Jason, I know there's interest to open that conversation. I volunteer myself for that meeting as well.
Thank you, Ms. Byers. Oh, just one clarification. On the youth jobs, the 122 number, is that a very specific group? Because in July, I was told it was closer to 300, if you count our fellows, our interns. And I know the number's higher than 122, so it's good news.
That is great news. We will go back and look at that. My understanding was the 122 was the ones that had done City Hall, not the program as a whole. But let me verify those numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, Vice Mayor.
A motion to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please cash your votes.
The motion is approved with Councilmembers Weir and Bashir Tash absent.
And with that, we stand adjourned at 4:43.